Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It's June 15th. Councilwoman Austin Maxwell has our prayer and our pledge.
So moved. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together. We ask that you be with the members of council, members of staff, our citizens and community, and help us make the best decisions for all involved, for the great city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. For in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. You have the consent agenda in front of you. You have 12 items. Is there anything that needs to come off the agenda for consideration before we vote? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into all business. You have ordinance 23021, impact fee schedule. This is second and final reading. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain. Is there something? Okay.
There was, um, there were, I'm sorry, it moved so quickly, there were two minor substantive, not, two minor amendments to the ordinance that need to be adopted before you vote on them. The two, the two of them are, one is that in the prior draft of the ordinance, the responsibility, and this is not the rate setting part of the ordinance, it is the, the one that is establishing the administrative structure for the impact fee, is that the responsibility for reporting how much impact fees was being collected was originally assigned to building and codes department. Staff realized it was better to be in the finance department. So that is the, one of the substantive revisions. The other one is talking through the rollout of the, of the fees starting July 1. Speaking with Assistant City Manager Sam Ullston and Codes Director Kevin Jones, the recommendation was that the impact fee on single-family residential would not hit those residential units that had an application for a building permit prior to June 30th. So that is, that is simply, that there wasn't any concern about that with commercial establishments, but just because there could be a delay in, you know, how long it might take building and codes to get that permit established. So those were the two amendments, and so those amendments need to be adopted and then vote on the ordinance.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
And we may just want to make this, just to encompass this, is that it's subject to staff comments and that will take in, incorporate?
Yes.
Exactly, you're right. So if we could get a motion, a motion subject to staff comments?
Subject to staff comments.
We have a motion?
And this is reporting to finance. Is that the first one?
Reporting to finance and June 30th applications for permits.
The rollout fee. So we're doing both at the same time?
Both at the same time.
All right.
So what we'll do is we'll vote on this as, this amendment, and then we will reconsider the, um, the ordinance as amended.
So that's in section three where it says, uh, no impact fee will be assessed for a single-family residential development if the city has received a building permit and application for that development on or before June 30th.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and second on the amendments. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll need to consider ordinance 23021, the impact fee schedule on second reading as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain. All right, we'll move to item 14, 23022. This is the community decency standard ordinance, and this is on second reading.
So moved.
Like the previous ordinance, there are amendments on second read. You have in front of you red line for the amendments. Most of them are non-material to the ordinance itself. There are some procedures, they're, they're clarifications or additions to just the language to clarify the sections, and then there are some additional procedural matters that were addressed in the, in the very latter part of the ordinance, and why you see the red on there. But generally speaking, they, they follow the same effect as the first, the ordinance passed on first read. So we'll need a motion to amend.
We'll need a motion on the amendments first, and then we can consider the ordinance on second reading as amended.
So moved.
Second.
This is the motion for, excuse me, we have a motion and second for the amendments.
For the red line amendments.
The red line amendments that we have in front of us. Okay. All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now consider 23022, community decency standard ordinance. This is on second reading as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, could I have?
Yes, motion and second, discussion, Mr. Shacklet?
Haven't had a chance to look at all of the red lines. There's been some changes, and I haven't had a chance to look at them materially, so I'd, I'm, I'm speaking from what, a document that was prepared early, so I want to hopefully, I have a couple of questions. Since the ordinance was prepared by our city attorney and city manager, I want to ask them a question and just, uh, the concern was reiterated within the document that, you know, is in compliance with existing municipal code and the TCA, the Tennessee Code annotated. And as I looked at those two documents, there's a lot of the same language that's used in this ordinance that it used in the municipal code. Almost felt like I had to take a shower sometimes when I looked at TCA, it was just pretty complicated to look at a legal document that's referring to everything. And I know trying to find something to capture every consideration is hard to do that, but I wanted to ask them, what is covered in this ordinance that is not already covered in our municipal code and the Tennessee Code annotated? That, that would be, grant us enforcement that is not already granted under the Tennessee Code annotated or municipal code? And either one of you or both of you can answer.
Well, the, the ordinance refers to both the city code and the Tennessee code, and it does so in a manner that really describes for the community that this is a community standard that we want to, that we wanted to, that the council wants to express. And so it does establish a standard in a clear fashion that this is the expectations for conduct. And the other thing it does is it, it does apply administrative penalties for violation of the standard, and the other statutes, of course, don't do that. They have other, they have, they, they seek other remedies or other penalties for a violation. So this ordinance does say, from an administrative standpoint, it, it provides additional penalties for violations that don't exist anyplace else.
Adam?
I would, I largely, I agree with, with Craig's explanation. I'll add a couple of things. The way I look at this ordinance is that there's kind of two, two parts. There is the part that, where we're defining what constitutes indecent behavior and decent material, and those are almost entirely, I would say entirely linked to existing state law or city code provisions. So, so we're defining the conduct that way, and that the, what is, what is significant about this ordinance is that there is an addition, an additional remedial measure in the form of, if there is a, in addition to a penalty or remedy that might exist in a current law, there is the civil penalty of forfeiting a right to get a permit for, for an event on city property if, after going through a due process proceeding. The other thing, the thing though, that I think that is new is, and it doesn't, what? Yeah, yeah. The, the part that I think is new is the part that if you look at C2 of the, the ordinance is the appropriation part, which places restrictions on how city funds could be used. There's, there's nothing explicitly in, that, that I know of, that I've seen explicitly mirrors that. And so that is new, that's kind of, that's a new violation, a new restriction in terms of how city funds are used. I'm not suggesting at all that they've ever been used in violation of that, but that, that then in the remedial section of the ordinance, which is section, shoot, I just, sorry, I just scrolled past it, the remedial section of the ordinance, which is section E, there is a person who, you know, misappropriates city funds in violation of that section C2 could be referred to for face civil or criminal penalties, penalties under existing law. So those are the, they're two parts of the ordinance, that's how I see it.
I think the origins of the ordinance were pretty clear. We had several discussions and about some actions that occurred at Cannonsburg and, and that precipitated what we felt to be some additional action related to actions on city property. But I was wondering why we moved from something that we had discussed that needed to be codified or have a, a penalty portion of it, and now we've moved into materials. And is it my understanding that the arbiter of discerning an offense or the prevailing standards rests entirely, we are, the authority is in the hands of the city manager to make, if somebody has trouble with some piece of material, whether they find it in the public schools, which are funded by the city, or any public building that the city owns and operates, and somebody has a problem with that material, they should go to the city manager to make, or the chief of police for enforcement on that if they're concerned about material that is being presented and whether it is appropriate for minors? I mean, there's several penalties that are pretty strict on this, and I just wondered to help the public understand what we are asking to do. How do you flesh this out? How, how is this actually going to be fleshed out? I mean, decency is, is something I'm for. I will, I will carry a banner and carry the pom poms and do a cheer for, for decency and protecting our children, but I'm just not sure how this is going to flesh out.
Well, from, from the standpoint of the material, the libraries and those materials, they can seek an assessment, they can, if there's a violation, then they probably get an assessment as to whether or not it complied with the decency standard or not. The ordinance itself doesn't impose a penalty directly. It, it references that it would be handled as any other misappropriation of funds would be handled. So that there's no, there's no penalty assessed for that. The penalties that are assessed under these ordinance have to do with losing the ability to get a, gain a permit.
But the schools are already under state law.
State law, yeah. This is consistent with state law, that's true.
So the state, the, the school, for example, school libraries have a very defined process.
I, I know that very well, and I, I, that's kind of the concern that we're moving into the public sector, the same kind of perspective that, that we have in the public schools. And, and if that's way the council believes that we're, we're a healthier community for that, that there's certain, the same kind of materials need to be not in our public library, as we say, are not in our public schools. But I'm saying we're going to, is that responsibility rest completely in our city manager? Is that what we want? Is that, is that the way we, we see this being fleshed out? I mean, where, where does somebody want recourse? Somebody has a book or a material that they think is inappropriate, who do they go to? Where, where do they go? There's already, you know, in, in our library system, there is already a recourse for people who don't agree with where a placement for a book is or whether it's appropriate. There's a procedure that's in place, and ultimately will, it resides with the library board. But if you'd rather that be resting on the shoulders of our city, our chief of police and our city manager to make that evaluation, then I, I just want to make it clear that that's what we want. And if, and if you violate that, and I just point you to the section E, the eighth item, that says, "Any person who utilizes funds in violation of this section may be subject to additional civil or criminal penalties for misappropriation of public funds." So someone that just says, wait a minute, this is not, we've got a system that's in place, and this is not appropriate for us to make that decision, then we could, we could criminally prosecute them. And I, I'm just concerned that we throw something up on the wall and we think there's, there's some unintended consequences that I'm not sure we, we've fully thought of, and I tried to pre, present that the last time we had. And if we can clarify them, I can be fine with this, but I, I don't think they're, it's clear. But if you're fine with it, and there's four of you that feel fine with this, folks, I've said it before, if I, if, if this is what you want, and we, the will of council is to move this forward, then move it forward. But I, I've got to register my concern about unintended consequences by the, and how we have kind of, in a, in a very sense, moved from what was a legitimate concern. We all were concerned about an event that occurred at a particular place, and we, we felt there was a hole in our ordinances that needed to be addressed, and we decided to leak into another concern. And I don't know, maybe you've gotten a lot of phone calls about, man, that library's full of a bunch of books that's just terrible. Maybe you have. But I don't know if that's the way, I mean, if that's the way you want to address it, but in this ordinance, it's going to fall on our city managers. And, and right now, maybe that's, you're, you're comfortable with that, with our police chief and, and our city manager being the arbiter of what is, what is considered to be the average member of our community, the behavior and conducts, accepted standards and behavior as judged by the average member of our community. Maybe, maybe you feel comfortable with that.
Mr. Shacklet, how would you like to see it?
That was my next question.
I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, so.
I, I would like to charge, I, this is kind of where we, where we ended up after the last meeting, because I said, is there a way to write this where it excludes action? So that we have institutions like our public library and their system in place to address concerns that the public has about the material that's in the library. If it's not doing a good job, then we need to address that, and that's addressed through the library board.
Correct.
But to me, I would, I would think moving into that area of where we're trying to control what is in the public library is not a, a good move for this council to make.
I wouldn't say that we're trying to control what's in the public library. One thing I see here, Bill, I'm looking at D1, and it says, "The city manager may authorize other city departments to assist the chief of police in enforcing this article." My view is, is city manager, whether that's Craig or whomever beyond Craig in 10 years or whenever, would designate the head librarian or the library board. And you're on the library board, correct, Sean?
Yeah, that's what I, I was about to say. I, I looked at it, let the library take its, library board take its course, and if the person that had the complaint wasn't happy with that process, then take it to Craig or take it to the chief of police. Let it run up the ladder like it's supposed to, and then if they're, they're not happy with that set, that process, then then go that next step further.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of points. So the statute specifically says, or the statute, the ordinance, I'm sorry, specifically says that this doesn't preempt any other process. So it doesn't preempt, preempt the process that's in place now at the library, and I would certainly hope that that would stay in place and, and be the first, and the start and a stop of any type of complaints that, that would happen there. I don't think that that's been the case in a lot of libraries in this country, or perhaps even in our library. So, so this is another mechanism, and council has, has the right to decide how it wants a limited resource, such as the appropriation it gives the library to be expended on something that's not technically, but as a practical matter, is an infinite demand, because there are lots and lots of books that can be put into the library, but council can decide and has a, has a right to decide where it wants its money spent, where it wants it to be focused on. And this is a statement that it's not to be spent for the type of books for minors that are specifically outlined in the, in the ordinance itself. So, yeah, we're not taking away, they should continue to do that, they should continue to have their processes there. And the decision is, this council and the city manager or anybody, doesn't prosecute anyone. That goes to another system. That goes to our justice system, and that's handled through there. That decision is, doesn't rest. The most that could be done from, if it came to my desk or a subsequent city manager's desk, is to perhaps render an assessment of what that is, or refer it to this, to county attorney or some other, some other means. But that, you know, there's, as I said before, there's, there's no penalties that the ordinance sets for this, but it's a very clear statement to the library that this council is appropriating funds, and the funds are to be spent in a manner that focuses on this, just like it focuses on other books that the libraries considers and rejects from, from buying.
The, there, one more point that I'd, I'd like to make too, and, and have somebody answer for me, is, the phrase within the whereas is portion of this concerned me a little bit. Whereas, patently offensive prevailing standards in the, in the adult community with respect to what is suitable for minors, when taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, and scientific value. Is our police chief and our city manager capable of making, I mean, I, this is not a, a knock on, on Craig, it's, what are we asking these people to discern to have the capacity to make that decision? I, I, I'm, I'm not concerned. And my other question, I'm, is when we pass this ordinance, I mean, there's a move now that says, we can't continue to have a stack of laws that make it difficult for people to understand, what am I supposed to do and what am I not supposed to do? And the issue is, we've added one more layer. With this in place, how are our children safer? That's my, that's my point. I mean, the intent of this is to make our children safer, and I'm all for that. Like I say, I'd be the, I think my life is said, I was cheerleading for children when, a long time ago, and will always advocate for young people, and pouring good stuff in them and creating a safe and nurturing environment in our community for children to grow and feel safe. But I'm not sure this ordinance tomorrow makes a safer community. I, I'm not sure this ordinance, I mean, it sounds good, and I've gotten, I guess I got three or four emails today, and I've tried to address them. I want to go talk to people, and if anybody out there wants to talk to me about this, please call me. I'd be glad to talk to you about it and what my concerns are. I'm, I'm, I'm not advocating nothing. I'm not adding, advocating that we don't as a person, you know, as a city and a community have personal, have responsibility. But some of these decisions are best left to parents, for parents to decide, because the diversity of our community demands that somebody may not see it the same way as I do. And because something sits on a shelf, doesn't mean that my children have to have access to it. It means that parents and grandparents, we have to be active and engaged in with, in our children's lives. But simply because something that disagrees with my moral values sits on a shelf somewhere doesn't mean that I'm irresponsible or that I haven't done my duty. So I, I don't know. Like I say, it, it's been hard, a couple of things that we've had to decide recently has been hard. I don't like being on this side of this issue because of my faith. I'm a person of faith, you all know that. But I'm concerned of what this says to a community about the value of personal freedom and personal choice. I, I'm not sure, and if the intent is to make our children safer, which kind of is the default phrase throughout this document, is to create a safer community for children and minors, is that what we have done when we passed this? Will we be safer tomorrow than we were today? If we've got Tennessee Code annotated and we've got our municipal code, we've got those instruments that are already, and for generations have been used in our community to, those blatant things that people will do in our community, they are adjud, they are adjudicated under Tennessee Code annotated in the existing municipal code. To add another layer and another consideration, does that really make our children safer? And that's, that's my question. If it is, then we should do it. But my consideration is that it may, I'm not sure it is, and there's some unintended consequences to some of the wording of this document that, that caused me caution and raises red flags, and is the reason that I can't vote for it. I hope you understand.
A couple of things. The, the ordinance applies to, what's the phrase, public places, I think? Public spaces? So it does address only public spaces, so private property, private establishments, private homes, it doesn't, it doesn't address those at all. And the phrase, serious artistic, litic, no, I'm sorry, literary, artistic, political, and scientific value is a phrase that comes out of case law. So that's, that's why it appears there.
It's in there.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's in TCA, but it, it originated with case law. So it does have a context to it that can be explored and understood if that was a defense that was raised, if someone were to come and ask for an assessment where they were faced a violation, that's, there is a, some, some case law that can be referenced to gain legal advice and make a decision on that front.
I want to, you know, first of all, Bill, you know how much everyone on this council respects you, so that you don't ever have to apologize for your, you having an opinion on something. I, I don't want any council member ever to feel like you have to apologize to someone else for voicing your opinion. That's what you're elected to do. You know, I think the, the purpose of this ordinance really hits two areas. I think it, it reflects the legislative judgment of the council. The council is the one who determines those decency factors inside, inside a community. Unfortunately, I think we have people, not just in our community, but now it doesn't take too much to research what's happening many other places that you just look at, and it's, I forget what the Supreme Court Justice who was asked to define pornography, but he said, "I can't tell you what it is, but I can tell you when I see it." And, and so. And, and so, you know, I think it's important for this body who represents this community to voice what those standards are. I think that's what our job is. That's what we're elected to do. I, I do understand what you're saying as regards to the city manager, but, you know, we provide guidance to the city manager that the city manager, either he or she can take that guidance. And if that city manager doesn't take that guidance as a, as a majority of the council, then there's other ramifications that come with that, with those decisions. Now, I think that's what we're elected to do. Secondly, the reason I, I'm supportive of this is that it sets penalties that do not exist in any of the legislation that we currently have. I think it, it defines and elevates a penalty that specifically involves minors on public property. And I, I don't want to get into the weeds on, you know, Bill, I could argue in the library right now, there may be things that I agree with that aren't allowed in the library right now. There are things I'm sure that I disagree with that are in the library, but, you know, the years that I've been up here doing this, I try to set the standard to say, we don't ask you whether you're Republican or Democrat, gay, straight, we don't ask what your ethnicity is when we come and pick up your trash. We provide services. Unfortunately, I think where we are now is we have to have some specific guidelines on what's appropriate for city property. That's where I am on this, and I think that's what this does. Look, if you, and, and, you know, we've gotten lots of comments, I think, as, as early as this morning, I had someone on social media calling me a Nazi or a transphobe because I commented about a, a very national figure who's coming to Murfreesboro next week to speak, that she believes that biological males shouldn't be competing against biological females in sports. And just like we all have a right to give our opinion, I did the same thing. And I'm a Nazi because I, I say that. And so, I just think, but that's on, that events on private property. And so I think this defines what is on public property. It's measured, it's concise, and it gives a process, which is why I think it's, it's, it's fair.
If it, if it were addressing actions, I, I think that's what precipitated this original document, was the actions. And there may have been some other things. The, the concern that I would have, if there are council members that are hearing something other than the concern, I mean, if there's concerns, we have never discussed in a workshop or in the session, some concern about how materials are being handled and passed out on public property are in our library, our public schools. We've never discussed that. We've never had those discussions. And yet it appears in this document that we're somehow going to pull all of this together, the actions on public property and the material, printed material on public property, we're going to somehow bring all of that together and, and put that authority and that arbiter that in the hands of our, uh, city manager and to make those decisions. And I, I just, that's asking a lot. I mean, I'm speaking from Craig's standpoint. He's told me, I don't, you know, that's just another brick on his load. Uh, but to me, I'm not sure that's asking, do you want to see a list of 350 books that are being potentially bought at the library? And can you research those and determine which one of those are appropriate? Or are we just going to wait until the public says, this one has a rainbow on it and I don't think it's appropriate for it to be in the library? Is that, I mean, I think we've, we've crossed a line into doing something that I'm not sure we have had enough discussion on to get the, what is believed to be the discuss- the consensus of, of our council, or the consensus of our citizens. Have you ever thought, we've, we've spoke about the community standards here, we haven't had an open hearing. We haven't had a public comments. Yes, we've had a lot of public comments over an issue when the people were screaming at us and stuff like that. And I think that generated some of the concern that we had to generate a document. But I'm not so sure that if we're, if we have a document that we're saying speaks to the, this community standards that we have, and it might fill this room up three people over. I mean, and we may have to do 14 of them to get everybody to listen to it. But if it is, if we're writing a document that says it speaks to the community standards, maybe we need to listen to the community standards. Let them tell us that we're Nazis and let them tell us that we're, you know, narrow-minded. I mean, that, that, that idea is, we're trying to find what is the right thing to do. And I, I'm, I'm concerned that we moved a little fast on this document. That, that, but like I say, I'm just one.
So you're suggesting that we table this and discuss it further, or?
What do you, does anybody have a thought that, you know, we're, we're talking, speaking to community standards and we have not even thought about having a community? You know, we haven't had a public comment section since we presented this. So, I mean, and you might get both sides. You might get advocates, I mean, you know, as we, we did that in the other issue, we had a full room on both sides of the issue.
But Bill, wouldn't you agree that we've talked about this for almost three weeks now and there's not been one single person that, that I've seen that's come? Is there anyone here for the Community Standards Act?
That's okay. You can, you can say, tell him that you are, if you were.
I'm just an individual.
Yeah. I, I just, that's what I'm, I, I've not received a single email.
Well, you also realize, oh, you haven't got a single email.
No.
Well, I've gotten four today. But I'm just saying, I, I wonder then, then there might be a whole other issue. The whole other issue might be that people don't know what we're doing. And they haven't read the standards.
Or agree.
Or they agree. Yeah. And that, and, and that, but is the assumption, is it fair to assume that they agree? Or is it more prudent and more responsible as an elected official to say, wait a minute, do I need to hear from the public? I mean, I mean, that, that's the only concern I would have is that, yes, I, I mean, we often do this. You know, say, well, I didn't hear a single vote, so they must all be for me. And then all of a sudden, we find after, after we voted, we went, there's all this pushback from what, well, how did y'all ever do that? Well, we felt you agreed with us. So, I don't know.
I was asked, um, can we, can we give an example of what we are talking about so the average citizen would know what we are talking about? So can you all give throw and con on what we're talking about so that people out there can, they don't know exactly the details of what we're talking about? Can you just give an example?
All right, do you want me to try?
Sure.
My, my, my trying is, and, and is that there's two aspects of this ordinance. There's one that addresses actions, and there's one that addresses speech and thought. And, and, and we've tried to do both of them in one ordinance. We've tried to address both of them and, and, and it does get a little, uh, because the penalty section of this is addressed primarily towards actions, is that, I mean, towards the actions on city property, actions on city property. There's not, it's not clear whether the penalties that are described for the actions on public property are also entailed for anybody other than the funding mechan, as a funding mechanism to the city, that, I mean-
Well, I, I, well, I think distribution of obscene materials would fall within the-
Yeah, okay, yeah, if you were passing out pornography or something like that, yeah. But, but I think, you know, it's clearly defined that the actions on public property are trying to be, we're trying to be more definitive as to what that is. But a lot of that is in, I mean, a lot of that is in the municipal code already. Nudity, uh, you know, obscene actions on public property, a lot of that is in the city code already. If you haven't looked at it, look at it. It's in the city code already, that, you know, we've operated for years that somebody can't do whatever, you know, on a, at a city park or, uh, you know, that's, that's, can be prosecuted as it is. That was my question about what are we getting that we haven't already got?
Bill, I have all the respect in the world for you. You've served this city for, for many, many years. Can you help me understand what you mean by speech or thought, or where that's outlined in this ordinance? Because I've read it and I've looked at it. I think it's a good ordinance. I support it. But I don't see where it says speech or thought in this ordinance.
Thoughts are determined, are represented in books. Books represent thought. Books represent speech. And that, that, that is, I mean, I, I don't know if there's a law that says that or anything, but I think books and thought and speech are, in my mind, very similar, because that's how people express their thoughts. That's how, you know, they speak, is in a book. And if we deny someone that says, well, here is something related to a religion that I don't necessarily agree with, and I don't think it's healthy. And we've said, you should be, have the opportunity to expose to a variety of thoughts. And that is the strength of our democracy, is that, that we don't limit thought. In fact, historically, when cultures had limited thought, a despot, somebody says, you must think this way, you must have this perspective. There, there's, uh, there's a challenge to democracy that, that I think we're, we're standing up for something and, and I'm, I'm afraid, the tables are turned a little bit. The challenge is not from diversity or for somebody challenging. If we are confirmed in our beliefs and our thoughts and we take, and we value our children, all these, all, everybody that values their children, then take care of them, watch after them, pour into them good things, expose them to the positive things. Don't be overcome. I mean, we, we, we have this kind of thing in our culture now that we think evil is, is going to take us over. It won't if good does. If, if we do our job as good and represent and, and are confirmed in our beliefs and allow for that, then it can actually be a strength. I choose. It's freedom. It's free will. You have free will to choose. And, and, and simply saying it's not available to you is not necessarily a, a strength. Now, and, and that's one man's opinion, and I'm, I'm sure, again, I would love to talk to anybody that, that has a challenge to this or wants to debate it with me, but my, my concern is that this ordinance doesn't move us to protecting, to making our children safer. And there are some implications for when we try to flesh this out, there might be some unintended consequences. And I'm not sure how the public, uh, what, what do we expect the public to do if they see something in, in the public library that they don't like? Do they go to the li, to the library staff or the library board? Or do they come to the city now? Because ultimately, the city is given the authority to decide what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate.
But the, the ordinance says they go through the standard proceed, this does, this, they still go through their normal procedure. This would be like an appellate type thing. The ordinance says the regular procedures stay in place.
But it's settled, that, that makes the decision. That, and right now, that settles it. You know, it's dealt with. But, but what we're saying is, we need another level of discernment, and that level is the city manager. And I, I just, I think that's asking a lot of our city management. And our police force too. Can you imagine a policeman coming through the library and somebody saying, well, you know, I want this out of our library? Is that, is that, is that what we want? I, I don't know. Like I say, if, if you deem it's, it's the responsible thing to do, then, you know, four votes and go for it. And I, and I, and I will commit to what I said last time. I will support whatever the council decides, but I will, I, I've got to raise these, these red flags that I do not believe this is appropriate.
We have, I'm pretty sure we have a motion in a second on the floor.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. We'll move to land use matters, ordinance 23023, termination of Osborne Lane Special, Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. Mr. Gore?
Mayor Council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. This is a staff recommendation to terminate the Osborne Lane Special Sanitary Sewer Assessment District. It's consistent with ordinance 15017 that says, once these assessment districts recoup 100% of their, uh, previous outlay, that they should be terminated. So we would recommend that termination.
It's always good to have one of these come up. That means that it's performed and paid back.
Absolutely. I'm available for questions if you have any.
So moved. I don't have any questions.
Motion?
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, you have Resolution 23R23, policy for public comment at public meetings.
Mayor Council, we have new legislation that was passed this year that requires for public comment at public meetings. There's certain restrictions on the public comments and there's certain processes that can be put into place. And this, um, this adopts, this resolution adopts a policy that dictates how those public comments can be conducted. These will, the legislation goes into effect July the first, so our meetings, starting in July, will implement the policy. Any questions? Happy to answer, or our city recorder, Ms. Brown, can answer, or Mr. Tucker.
Is this a public comment before each item on the agenda, or is it a dedicated period of time?
The policy sets 15 minutes before we start the, well, before we go into the actual agenda to allow for public comments. And comments are restricted to only those that are on the agenda themselves. And then some agenda items do come with public comment. And so, you know, the suggestion would be to move those, when those people stand up to make public comments on something that later has a public comment, is to request that they comment during that section, because we still have the ordinance or the statutes that require public comment on some matters.
And to clarify, this policy would be in effect for the entire city. So this would be for every board, commission, committee that has an action item on the agenda.
Now, we said the first 15 minutes, what about if we actually came down to that particular item and someone thought about something else? Will they still be allowed to comment?
Well, that would be-
Not unless it was a public hearing.
Yeah.
Typically, you know, we're going to have a public hearing at the planning commission level and at the council level. But it's, right now, it would be for any action item ordinance. So it would, the, the reason I think they gave the option to be able to do that either at the front or the end of the meeting, it didn't make sense to put it at the end of the meeting because we would have already been voted on the action. But then I think it was also impractical, impractical to have a public hearing at the, or a comment section at the end of every single action item. So that, that was why I think that having it at the front of the meeting would be, would be good. And I think we talk, the ordinance, the state law has you sign up to, to come.
We have in the policy that you have to sign up six hours before the meeting, either by calling or emailing. And the way that you call or email will be in the notice of the meeting. And if you don't sign up, you're not allowed to speak.
It's going to be, in my opinion, I think it's going to be imperative that our social media team get out what this new state law is.
Now, we said the first 15 minutes. What about if we actually came down to that particular item and someone thought about something else? Will they still be allowed to comment?
Well, that would be...
Not unless it was a public hearing.
Yeah.
Typically, you know, we're going to have a public hearing at the planning commission level and at the council level. But it's, right now, it would be for any action item ordinance. So it would, the, the reason I think they gave the option to be able to do that either at the front or the end of the meeting, it didn't make sense to put it at the end of the meeting because we would have already been voted on the action. But then I think it was also impractical, impractical to have a public hearing at the, or a comment section at the end of every single action item. So that, that was why I think that having it at the front of the meeting would be, would be good. And I think we talked, um, the ordinance, the state law has you sign up to, to come.
We have in the policy that you have to sign up six hours before the meeting, either by calling or emailing. And the way that you call or email will be in the notice of the meeting. And if you don't sign up, uh, you're not allowed to speak.
And that, it's going to be, in my opinion, I think it's going to be imperative that our social media team get out what this new state law is and, and notify people to let them know these comments or this process is available.
I just ask because I know we've had people in the past who want to speak.
Does the council have any discretion as far as if they haven't signed up? Could the council permit someone to speak even if they haven't signed up?
There's, there's not discretion if someone hasn't signed up. However, there is, uh, discretion given to the, the presiding officer in the event, um, to extend the 15-minute period of time if it is necessary to provide equal opportunity for opposing views to speak. So, for example, if you had six people speak, um, and sign up to speak, and three of them were pro some matter, and the, the other three were opposed to that same matter, it would probably be reasonable, and they all used, were planning on using all three minutes, it would probably be reasonable to extend the period, comment period for three minutes.
Bill, I think the toughest part for whoever's going to chair the meeting is, is going to put a lot of onus on a lot of our board and commission members. I think the toughest part is, is having people understand that this is for a, to come to comment on a specific matter, not, not just public comment. And, and that is going to be paramount on making sure that this is just not an open mic.
Are we still going to do our first meeting of the month, the public comments?
Yeah, that's the plan. Yeah.
And that way, you can come talk about whatever you want to.
And we do have in the policy that this policy does not apply to that first of the month public comment.
And, and there just, for additional information, there's been quite a bit of communication emails going back and forth in Tennessee Municipal Attorney Association listserv about what constitutes an actionable item. I think the best definition and what I would advise city council and other, you know, other bodies of the city is that it is something that, um, that could be voted on, whether that's a resolution, uh, uh, an ordinance, a permit, um, an appointment, a motion, a contract, tho, those types of things constitute actionable items. And, and it's an actionable, it's an actionable item regardless of whether city council ends up voting on it or not at that meeting.
And council, the great thing, excuse me, if we see that there needs to be tweaks to this ordinance as we get into this, there's no reason that we can't amend it as we see that, you know, 15 minutes is not enough, or we want to suspend the rules. I would assume a council member could make a motion to suspend the rules and we could extend that 15 minutes.
Absolutely. That would be permissible.
Whoever's chairing the meeting could say, without objection, I'd like to extend, you know, we don't want to cut people off there if they, they're here to speak about something.
And it is a resolution, so we can change it quickly.
Do we get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, the Titan Aviation Fuels Agreement, Fuel Agreement. Mr. Kirky?
Mayor, members of the city council, first, I'd like to just remind everybody about Monday will be an interesting day at the airport. We'll be closing the runway for, uh, hopefully just about a 30-day period to take care of the pavement.
Don't say hopefully, Chad.
Yeah.
30-day period, right?
Solid 30 days, Mayor. But we will be coordinating with all our customers and businesses out there as, as, uh, sharing the progress as that project continues. The, uh, the item that I bring to you tonight is, uh, dealing with Titan Aviation Fuels as part of the services that the airport provides is kind of like a gas station for the airplanes. And, uh, it is very involved in, not only are we purchasing the fuel, but also deals with credit cards, quality control training, uh, advertising, and equipment such as fuel trucks. So we, a few months ago, working with our purchasing department, went out for a, a request for competitive sealed proposals. We received five different, uh, proposals from five different companies. One was disqualified and, uh, had a selection committee, uh, score all of those. And Titan Aviation Fuels came out on top in their, uh, cost of fuel and providing equipment such as our fuel trucks at a zero-cost lease, and also taking care of the maintenance of those trucks, which is very important to our operations at the airport. So with that in mind, I, I request your approval of this agreement with Titan Aviation Fuels. There'll be a second one that is going to be coming to you in a few weeks regarding the actual fuel farm equipment that will be going, being placed in the pad that is currently under construction. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
If no comments, so moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Kirky.
Mayor McFarland, what was your vote?
Aye. Sorry. All right, we'll move to, I feel like I just got scolded by...
[laughing]
I like sinking down in my chair here. All right, can I, um, item 19, City Concrete and Storm Drainage Annual Contract Renewal.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. If I could, um, just wanted to let the, uh, council know that, uh, T-Dot will start repaving Highway 96, El Fort Parkway, Franklin Highway between the interstate and, uh, just, uh, just past Brinkley Road, uh, starting this Sunday, uh, starting milling and overlaying that. They'll be doing that work at night, and, uh, thanks to, to them, to the council for approving, they'll actually be widening during the repaving from, uh, from five lanes to seven lanes. So, uh, we'll be getting two extra lanes of, uh, of traffic for a very, uh, for very little, little payment there. So thanks to them. On the, uh, my first agenda item tonight is the City Concrete and Storm Drainage Annual Contract Renewal. This is our, uh, final renewal year with, uh, Rollins Excavating. Rollins has successfully performed its contractual obligations in a manner beneficial to the community, and staff is recommending the renewal of this contract, which was originally awarded in 2019. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. So moved.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now move to the annual paving contract award.
Yes, the, uh, staff advertised this contract, and three bids were received on June 17th. The two lowest bids, uh, was from Wiregrass Construction and Hawkins Asphalt, were within, uh, $50,000 of each other. Both these contractors has, have successfully completed numerous paving projects under our annual contract for several years, and has also paved as subcontractors on capital improvement projects. Uh, staff recommends awarding both, uh, these contractors, the contracts, which gives us a little bit of flexibility in case one is busy, um, and, and, and so we can get to projects more expeditiously. Uh, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to wetland mitigation credit purchase. This is Rutherford Boulevard.
Yes, in March 2022, council approved the design contract for the extension of West Rutherford Boulevard to make a connection to Warrior Drive. This connection includes a bridge over I-24 as a northern connection, as well as a northern connection to, to Rutledge. Uh, a section of the proposed alignment was encroaches on a, on an existing wetland. To complete the environmental phase of this project, wetland mitigation credits will need to be purchased to satisfy the Corps of Engineers and T-Dex's permit requirements. These credits are available through the Christmas Creek Mitigation Bank at $60,000 per credit, or we use the term credits basically per acre. The city needs to purchase 5.22 credits for a total price of $313,200. The proposed purchase agreement has been attached for your review. Uh, the, the purchase of these credits are within budget, will be funded from the 2021 CIP fund. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
When will this project begin? Like, when they actually put it over 24 and begin that road and so forth? Are we looking at another year, two years?
Uh, should, should start within the year. It's actually progressing very, very well. This is honestly the, one of the most difficult, uh, parts of the project, is working out the mitigation agreement with, uh, with the Corps and, and T-Dex. And so this is, this is really a huge step forward for us.
Okay. So moved.
Second. Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to the contract for sidewalk repair services for ADA compliance.
Uh, yes, this is a project, our contract that we've used for the last couple of years with Precision Concrete Cutting. Uh, with the success of the, uh, the previous contract, staff proposes contracting with, with, uh, PCC for ADA sidewalk repairs in conjunction with the annual street resurfacing project. The maximum contract amount is not to exceed $100,000 and is effective for one year from the notice-to proceed date. Uh, the primary funding for this is from the State Street Aid Fund. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, Matt, we have a master services agreement, TTL Engineering.
Yes, uh, final item tonight is the city currently has several master service agreements with professional consultants. Uh, TTL has provided professional services to the city for, for many, many years. Uh, services include, uh, geotechnical studies, environmental consulting, and, and construction material testing. Uh, the, the, the agreement will allow city staff to use TTL periodically in the development of smaller specialized projects. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions in this agreement.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to the, thank you, Mr. Griffith. Uh, we'll move to the purchase of liability property vehicle cybercrime and workers' comp insurance. Legal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm asking and seeking your approval for the city to purchase insert, uh, various insurance coverages for fiscal year 2024. Um, all of these are renewals of the policies from, uh, that the city currently has and has had for the last, uh, two years. Um, recommending that the city purchase, uh, its liability coverage from public entity partners, uh, certain vehicle insurance for, from public entity partners, uh, workers' compensation insurance from public entity partners, uh, uh, property insurance or fire and casualty insurance from travelers, uh, a crime insurance policy from travelers, and then cyber insurance from Cowbell Insurance Agency. As a note in the, the council communication, um, the insurance premiums and costs have been fairly flat for the city, fortunately, for the last several years. Um, however, this year, we're, we see market increases, marketed increases in, um, in all of them, almost all of the policies. Um, to, to a large extent, that is the effect of market forces in the insurance industry. It is of the effects of turmoil in the reinsurance markets that are trickling down to, uh, primary insurance coverage and liability and, uh, property. So the, and also, uh, so that, those are forces that are beyond the city's control. Uh, the, the other premiums, part of the premiums that's largely driving that is that, from the property standpoint, uh, replacement value of property has gone up, and the city has added property, um, in the last few years. So, you know, the city's, the value of the city property has gone up, so that means premiums go up. Um, and in the case of workers' compensation and liability, um, it's one, outside of market forces, one of the driving forces is simply the fact that, um, increases in the size of the city's budget. And, and that's one of the factors that's used to, um, set, set premiums for both liabilities and, and workers' compensation, especially in the payroll area and workers' comp. Um, I'm happy to go, um, address any questions further, and there are, uh, representatives from public entity partners here if you have any questions for them.
No questions. So moved.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 25. This is the sewer allocation variance, uh, restaurant retail development on South Church Street. Harvey?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the Murfreesboro City Council. Uh, the next item we have here is a sewer allocation variance for a restaurant and retail development that is proposed on the east side of South Church Street, uh, between Goodwill Industries and South Branch Nursery, just to the west of Indian Hills subdivision. Uh, the request is for an additional nine single-family units of sewer capacity in addition to the currently allowed eight single-family units, uh, that are allowed for this property. Um, our Murfreesboro Water Resources Department has reviewed the application and confirmed that the additional capacity is available in this area, and staff has reviewed the application as well, and views the advantages of job creation and tax revenue of greater benefit than the requested additional single-family units of suitable capacity. Um, I'm available if you have any questions.
So moved. Uh, go ahead.
Second.
Go on.
We have...
Second.
Motion, a second, but you put it next to whoever's name you want to.
I think he spoke first, so I'll be the second.
Age before beauty, awesome.
All right, please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. All right, we'll move to board and commission appointments. You have the Water Resources Board appointment, um, recommending Warren Russell to replace the expiring term of Dr. Alphonse Carter Jr., who, Doc, uh, Mr. Gore, Dr. Carter served, has served on the Water and Sewer Board for, is it 28 years?
No, no, 24.
24 years.
Wow.
So, um, you'll, you'll see Mr. Russell's appoint, um, appointment to the Planning Commission was expiring June, and Warren has a, a great engineering background. Um, so you'll see another recommendation come for replacement for his position on the Planning Commission, and Warren was excited about, um, coming over to the Water and Sewer Board. I know Darren needs all the help he can get. And I want to make sure and publicly recognize Dr. Carter for seven or six terms on, um, the Water and Sewer Board. But, you know, council members, as we've talked about in, in public workshop, we're, we're needing to, to start getting some, some people acclimated, made it in some succession plans in our, in our boards, uh, to make sure that we, as we all are getting older, that we've got new people who want to make sure that they want to take part in the city. So that's the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to licensing. You have, uh, some beer permits.
We have a special event permit for a Chamber of Commerce event on July 11th. The applicant's met requirements for a permit and is recommended for approval pending their special event permit.
So, second.
So second.
So I'll second. You were first.
Motion, a second.
Beauty before age, right?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, any statements?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff?
Counsel? I have one item, and this is not for action tonight, but I wanted to ask, Aaron's not here, but ask Craig. There's been a lot of information that's come out from the state budget regarding the public safety plan that the governor has had approved. It, it, it puts some pretty steep increases for law enforcement, which in turn, happy for the state employees, but in turn, that gets pushed down to municipalities because we're all competing against the same, for the same talent.
Employees, yeah.
So I, I wanted to ask, I wasn't here Thursday for a second reading on the budget, but would like to get some information to come back to the council for a budget amendment for a five percent cost of living increase for commissioned officers and certified firefighters. So anyone that's either commissioned, law enforcement, including dispatchers, and certified firefighters on the police side. And, and, you know, council members on the, on the dispatch side, I think we've learned because they're not commissioned, it is important, we have to specify because they are under a, the standard pay plan, correct?
They do a lot.
With the, the exempt employees in the police and fire are on the general pay plan. They're not in the, the step plan.
Yep.
Yeah.
So any commissioned officer or certified firefighter. I, I would like, if we could get that number back to see what that is, and see if that's something that we could afford. And, and would say, I know that employees and people will talk, and we value every single employee, and I wish we could do something for every single employee. But we do have over thirty police officers that we are down and needing to hire. So if someone wants to change from their course of field and be a police officer, we would, I know we would welcome, welcome that, so. All right, that'll hopefully come back at our next, next meeting and get information. Any other business for council? Craig, will you be meeting next Thursday?
The plan right now is to meet next Thursday, yes.
That's the twenty-second, right?
Right.
Happy Father's Day.
That's right, Father's Day is on Sunday.
Happy Father's Day. And Grandfather's Day.
I got, I got, I guess one, maybe one or two things. I know everybody wants to get out of here. Wonderful event yesterday at Patterson Park with the unveiling of the plaque on Madeleine. You were there. Dr. Patterson sounds like he was a wonderful person. You said, want to get behind him and drive behind him, as Dr. Bonner says, right?
He talked as slow as he drove.
Okay. But a wonderful...
When he did talk, people listened.
Right.
When he did talk, people listened.
Yeah, I think it was great. Rick was there, Rick LaLance, and he had fought that fight to help get that. But it was just a great event and, and learned a lot about Dr. Patterson. You know, the only thing I'll, I'll bring up, and maybe this isn't the right time to bring it up, but, you know, the whole One East College. I know you were on the radio the other day, Shane, and, you know, doggone it, we've been looking at that empty lot, you know, for a long time now. And at some point in time, hopefully, we won't be looking at it. Hopefully, it'll be full of livability. And I guess I'm tying this into the, the project that's coming up, you know, down on, on Broad Street. All I would ask is that as a council, if you think about it, you know, we, we own the fire department. We own the water department. We're purchasing properties. And I think if we don't like, or if there's something we're not comfortable with in terms of the mix of the housing, you know, me personally, I want to see as many condos as I can down there. If there's something we don't like, we hold all the cards. It's our property. So let's just make sure we're getting the best possible deal at the end of the day so we don't end up with another situation, you know, like we have over on One East College. And that's, that's really all I got to say on it. And happy Father's Day.
I think you're going to see on One East College, hopefully, some, Mr. Tyndall and Sam Huddleston and Greg Midnight had met with the developer on One East College. I, I met with the group today. I think part of that was precipitated because I had made comments at WGNS. Just to be, you know, I think we take credit when things have gone well, and we have to stand up when things haven't gone well. And I'm embarrassed that One East College is, is where it is right now. After we went through the entire process of picking a development team, and so, you know, I, and I relayed that to the developer today. I think the developer can't say it was a great conversation. Hopefully, maybe some things will come out of that. But I do think, sitting across from them, I think they were sincere about wanting to get the project started. I anticipate that they're going to be meeting with the city team. They've got a few asks that they want to come back to the Planning Commission, the city council. I, I can't speak for the entire council. I advised them that, I felt like that there were seven very angry people, disappointed people, that, on the city council, that would, would not take lightly any changes that would be coming, that would lessen the project. And so I think they listened to that, and hopefully, ultimately, where the conversation ended is that we want that project to start, just as much as they want that project to start. But a guy told me a long time ago in construction that, he said, I'm from the show-me state, and you can tell me or show me, and that's where we need, we've heard a lot of things over the last four years, and until the shovel is turning, we need to see that. And I did make a comment, I'll tell y'all, it's hard to ask for changes when we have to ask you to mow your grass on the site, and the site's not being kept up. And, and that was a, a discussion, or a comment I hope that they, they heard. So, welcome, I'll be happy to let y'all take those conversations anytime. All right, seeing, no other business, happy Father's Day, and we'll see y'all next week.